Mayor Meyer.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Renick.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Joseph.
Here.
Alderman Madre. Alderman McDermott.
Here.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman McDermott, would you leave us some of the questions?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On this land of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, and one and indivisible.
And next is our invocation from Pastor Calhoun, and I'm from Seaside Church, and I'd like to also thank the church. City Council used their facilities on Saturday for our strategic meeting, and we so much appreciate that.
Of course, thanks for using it. Put it there for it. Paul said in Romans, he said, "Let everyone be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which God has established." The authorities that exist have been established by God. Consequently, whoever rebels against the authority is rebelling against what God has instituted, and those who do so will bring judgment on themselves. Do you all pray with me? Jesus, the King of kings, you appoint the nation's leaders in Congress, in Texas, and even here in Jamaica Beach. We pray for our leaders to protect our freedom so that we might live out our faith freely without fear. We pray for the salvation of all our nation's leaders, that they may know you. Place people in power who revere you and will serve you for the good of their communities. We pray that you would forgive us, restore us, renew us. Help us to seek your kingdom above all things. May we be peacemakers as we look to you as the source of peace, because you are King of kings, Lord of lords, and Prince of peace. Thank you, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we've added a new item to our agenda. This is for any council member to step forward and indicate if they have any conflict of interest concerning any of the items on the agenda. So at this time, do we have any known conflicts of interest with items on the agenda?
Mayor, I do have a concern, because we're gonna talk about, where is it? The over sixty-five homestead exemption. I just turned sixty-five.
And I clarified with our city attorney for that very reason, for actually any of you that it might apply to. And she was, well, sixty-five were just the homestead itself at any age. And she said that you were all able to promote on this.
Okay, thank you.
And I have one concern as well. Not to personally go after anyone, it's not meant to be that way at all, I just, for the short-term rental discussion. I know a council member's husband here, who's a great person also, is an architect, but does specialize in short-term rentals as an income stream. So just wanted to bring that up and see what that constitutes.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, next is public comments. Ms. Jones?
Can you address one six, one two, permit? I'm just a little concerned about the garbage ordinance. I like it, because I'm tired of picking up, the STR is garbage. But there are some of the older people in the community that don't do Facebook, they don't do text messaging or anything. And I'd hate to see some of those get a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine for having a white bag out there or something. And so it's something I've been trying to talk with some of them about, but I think, I thought we need to look at that a little bit, because that's kind of a stout one for an older person who is on fixed income, so that's all.
Thank you. This is very valid comment, Ms. Jones. We had three email comments.
Okay, our first one is from Anne Linsley, one-six-five-five-eight Flounder Way. Fast-moving vehicles on the flooded streets were a problem. However, by Thursday evening, there were boats on the main canal causing waves that continued to flood lower-elevation homes. They were not going fast, but still generating a wave that pushed water back into homes. Please consider addressing the larger impact of unnecessary wake and/or movement during flooding conditions in your discussion. Then Andrea Sperry, one-six-six-one-seven Jamaica Beach Road. One, I believe the city, through the GLO of NEVI, needs to address the changes in the beach that occur after every storm or exceptionally high tide. A plan that is able to adapt with changing situations is needed, rather than a new plan after each storm or high tide. This is evidenced by currently acceptable parking within the storm-sand fencing and within the posted "Do not park past this" sign area. We need to be consistent in what we expect from residents and visitors to the beach. We can have public access to the beach while still supporting dune recovery. If dunes are only the mounded sand per GLO, how can vegetation along the dunes increase, as seen after last year's storms? How can that support beach dune recovery? Without dunes, what is there to protect homes and roadways from flooding during future storms and tides? Two, reading the beach user fee survey draft posted for tonight's council meeting, the survey is slated to be in support of a beach user fee and the addition of amenities. The implied assumption is that a fee will magically fix any problems residents have with use of the state beach, without first identifying what residents perceive as the problems. Identifying perceived problems beyond crowding should be a first step. I would suggest the addition of a question asking what residents see as problems with the current beach management, and if they believe that a fee would address the issue they perceive. Do we have data that shows a fee will decrease crowding? Nowhere in the survey drafted introduction doesn't mention that management of the beach changes with each storm, nor does it account for the upcoming beach nourishment plan and its effect on the beach. I understand that any change to beach management requires GLO approval, and this is not rapidly obtained. However, are we jumping the gun to plan for a beach that is different from the current beach, and with no data to support these changes? With Galveston restricting alcohol on all its beaches and driving soon to be banned on all its beaches, what is the council's vision for JV? Is the beach near JV to be the only beach on Galveston Island with driving and alcohol allowed? Is this a future residents want? What, thank you for allowing public comments. And then the last one, Larry Bentall, one-six-six-three-zero Nassau Way. Regarding the survey for putting a park on the beach and charging a fee, the survey is too biased towards adding improvements, lacks critical detail, and is too short. If you're going to mail out a survey and spend money on postage, then why not fill the page with more questions? Your deciding to keep it simple also hinders getting back more specific feedback. Take the opportunity to get more opinions from the folks. Do the folks realize that amenities are not necessarily for the free side or all year? Or are they available beyond the park season of the fees? It's not specified. Ask the community to prioritize why they would want a beach fee. Is it to reduce overcrowding for locals who pay a fee? Reduce overall costs of maintenance? Increase STR business? Increase local business? To be nice to visitors or others? Why is there a separate question about alcohol on beach, but not a separate question about bathrooms in beach area? An equally controversial proposition. Why ask how many times people go to the beach instead of how many fifty-dollar annual passes they want? How many daily tickets sold becomes too many in the sense that the beach starts to get too overcrowded? And what number of vehicles defines a crowded beach? How many tickets do you anticipate selling on a weekend? And how much do you want to sell on the weekend? Final thought. What's the problem with taking the survey after a plan is put together and the community gets to see more detail, as you would present it to the GLO? The rush and lack of detail just seems like you are trying to hide something. What happened to transparency? Thank you for considering these thoughts.
All right, thank you. Okay, we don't have any special presentations today. Announcements, just a reminder about the fire department fundraiser, which is next Saturday at the park. Always a great fun event, and it helps our department do what they do for us. All right, next are reports from the directors. City Administrator Francis.
Thank you, Mayor. Mine will be real short tonight. The debris cleanup has begun. Contractor was here yesterday and today. They've made, I think, about three truck loads so far, and will be hauling another one first thing in the morning. It looks like that's going to be maybe it for the first pass, so we will reevaluate what is left and make a determination whether or not we need to bring this contractor back for a second pass, or whether our local contractor will be able to handle what's left. But for those who might still be putting out some debris, there is some information both on our Facebook page and our website. Really detailed breakdown from FEMA as to how to separate the debris. Been getting some questions about household hazardous waste, so paint, things like that, they are picking those up. But they are not picking up tires, and so continue to work through that. And originally, we put out that we would collect through July 1st, and we will keep that scheduled if need be. But it's not quite as much as we originally thought it could be, so we will adjust accordingly.
What about batteries? Batteries?
I was not told anything about batteries not being accepted.
Okay.
Tires was the only thing that they said FEMA really didn't think was likely disaster.
Not damaged, not damaged by a storm?
Yeah, exactly. Of course, there was, during the storm, as the person alluded to, we did lose a lot of dune. And so dune restoration is kind of on the forefront of our thoughts right now. Been in contact with GLO as to what we might be able to do. They alluded to people parking up inside the dune fence. And unfortunately, there isn't really anything that we can do, because what dunes were there cease to exist now. But we do have the ability to make a dune restoration area, and so we're looking at how we might be able to thin that off.
To create, delineate that line.
What that would be. And so, and of course, contractors are still trying to remove sand from places that try to build back some of the areas of dunes, put it back on the beach where it came from. But there's a lot of work to be done in that regard. The state park is gearing up for another burn. The window is July 8th through the 31st, and that's a large window. But they are saying that currently, they're not looking to include the west side, which borders Jamaica Beach. So it's thirteen-mile road to Park Road and then back to the bay. But I think when we get a little closer and they know that they're going to do the burn, they'll reach out to us and we'll try to make people aware that it could get a little hazy or whatever, so. And then, just a reminder to each of you, our SVP is due tomorrow for the Mayor's Association Dinner, and I will stand for questions.
Based on all the grass that floated out onto Jolly Roger at that state burn, we'll be welcomed. They might not burn as much as they thought, though, based on what was on Jolly Roger. Okay. Nothing at this time, Chief? And Robert's off today, so, okay, next is approval of minutes. So for our consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve the minutes asked posted from both the regular city council meeting on June 16th, June 13th, and the special city council meeting on June 22nd?
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting and the special council meeting.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of approval of minutes as posted? Okay. Comments from council? Alderman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to challenge everyone in the community to fly your flag over the Fourth of July. If yours is tattered, you know what to do. And buy a new flag and bring your old flags to City Hall to make a beach hardware or to me. And with the busy summer, be sure to carry your Stars for Truths. And council members, you didn't get back to me yet about my challenge to you a month ago. So I'd like to hear if you did share any and what your experience is with that. I'm sad to report also that Barbara Ryder passed away. She was a kind and gracious lady. She was also our city secretary from nineteen-seventy-eight to nineteen-seventy-nine. My condolences to her family. And Mayor, as you know, I have been on the STR task force, and their meeting for that was, I was watching it before I left. So, but I did get some, and I emailed it to you. My printer stopped working, but I'll let that to the mayor.
Thank you.
And so that way, if they make a decision in there, then I'll report that to you when I get back home. Also, last, it's sad and scary to have these storms affect our island, but it's amazing to see our community come together. And the concern and love that I've seen shared throughout the community has just made my heart happy. And Mayor, the city's done a terrific job with cleaning the beach, the storm debris, opening the pool. And our police department, thank you. You've gone above and with security and watching over us. Thank you so much. Bravo, everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Alderman McDermott?
Actually, I have a few today. I don't know their names, and I tried to tell them that they do a great job, but I'm only in lesson three-point-three of my Rocket Spanish training course. But the two ladies that pick up the trash on the beach, clean the pavilion, and weed the ditches are incredible. And I don't know if there's any way to acknowledge that to them in a public way, but that's the hardest working two ladies I've ever probably seen. And they do a fantastic job on every task that they're assigned, I think. Again, I tried to tell them that, I don't believe the message got through, so hopefully I didn't say anything. We also just finished the city planning session last weekend, and I think that was really cool. Everyone, the council and the mayor and the city administrator, they worked together in a great way to move, I think, the future of Jamaica Beach forward. We're not done yet, but it was great to be involved in that. Couple more things. I know I have some official duties of STR's Beach and future Jamaica Beach type stuff, but I would also be happy to take on unofficial thing that, I don't know how long it's been since a city council member in Jamaica Beach has had young children. It may have been Sherwood, when he had young children, he's been on city council since they grew up. But I would be happy to be kind of like the czar of the family or children. If you want, email me ideas to make Jamaica Beach a better community to raise kids in and to grow families in, and I might help people who want to move here that are at one with Jamaica Beach. So I'd like to volunteer to do that. With that, I'm just, I'm also curious, among the swimming pool hours that they're created because of certain reasons or just picked? I know with the three-year-old and one-year-old, I've lived two lifetimes before eleven o'clock in the morning when they open. So if there was any way to slide that to the left a little bit, so that young kids could get in the pool before naptime and lunch, that would be great. And then finally, I don't know what the max runs the mosquito truck can do, but I think we should hit it and just start spraying those little suckers every day if we can. I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Alderman. Mayor Pro Tem Renick?
So I wanted to bring up last weekend's Hurricane Preparedness meeting occurred at the Firehouse, and I attended that, and I thought it was really wonderful. It was great to meet all of the political folks and all the emergency management personnel who put in their time and not only spoke, but also shared information with us. It was a great networking session in addition to, you know, learning from them. And one thing that really impacted me the most was their willingness to share information as well as help us out in any time of need. So I wanted to thank them personally for, you know, spending their time to share with us. I thought it was a good event. I think it could have been better attended, but, you know, it was hot. We were all hot. It was very, very moisture-ridden. The Firehouse was very warm and wet. So some of the ones that I had, or individuals that I spoke to was Ryan Dugan from Center Point, who is also key, he's our representative from Center Point, which is super important during the storm to keep the power going. And so I had a good conversation with him, and I appreciated his time. One point that I wanted to bring up was, in addition to having a lot of flooding, some of the results of that flooding was actually exacerbating potholes that exist in our streets. And after the water had receded, there were some neighbors that had sent me some photographs of the potholes. So what was there is now even a larger concern, so it's something that we need to certainly address moving forward. What else? And lastly, I would like to concur with the gentleman next to me regarding the fantastic collaboration that we had at the, sorry, planning session. So the planning session went very well, and I was really representative of, you know, cooperation. So that was, it was interesting and fun, and I think everybody was really respectful of each other. It was an interesting week, especially Saturday, after being roasted in the Firehouse. That's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Joseph?
Yes, Mayor. I just want to also thank the city staff for all these great community events that we've been having. Tina, you're such a great PR person on social media and Facebook. I don't know anybody, I haven't seen anybody that's just so engaging, gets everybody excited to be there. Got to attend the Pink Flamingo bicycle ride, so I'm just hoping that we can do three miles next time instead of a mile and a half. I could have gone, I could have done it twice. So I'm suggesting longer next time, but that was really great. I still have my Flamingo on my bicycle, so. But I also, in echoing what Alderman Renick said about the Hurricane Preparedness meeting, I was there too, and it was such a great speakers. I know it was a long meeting, but, you know, we could pull it, sponsored it, so it's their agenda, but it was really good. And I liked Ryan Dugan also, he was just great. And one thing I wanted to reinforce and echo what he said was that to make sure, let the crews do their work. If they're in our community, if they're in our village, do not approach them and let them do their work, because they're not decision-makers, they can't stop and answer questions, they need to continue doing their work. So I think that's important for us to continue to remind our neighbors, if they try to approach them because they have issues, to call Center Point and make those, and make sure they make a ticket. And I also too, again, I echo my fellow Aldermen, that, you know, that strategic workshop was really wonderful after that. You know, I was really impressed that all of us, each of us, but then the sum is, you know, the whole, that we worked together so very well, we respected, we listened to each other, we did a lot of laughing, which is great. And that helped make it a much more productive session. And then I'm excited that today, Brandon and I attended that meeting on Leading with a Purpose Workshop, which was training for newly-elected officials. And I know that was just a really great opportunity to learn some things that, you know, we haven't known before. And also, we completed the Texas Open Meetings Act. So I gave my certificate to Kendall already, it's for my file, but it was very helpful. And then I know I'm working on my focus areas and getting some things set up there, but also been communicating with the JBIC Board President. And so we're still, we're going back and forth on text trying to get together, so I'm looking forward to their rescheduled meeting. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to the business. First thing on the agenda is discussion, consideration, and take action. That translates to vote on approving adoption of a resident in over sixty-five, disabled persons' homestead exemption from city ad-alarm taxation. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion to discuss the new ordinance for homestead.
Okay, do I have a second? All right. We talked about this last week. Kendall reached out to our tax assessor-collector, Ms. Cheryl Johnson, to get clarification on what the disabled persons exemption would look like in over sixty-five. And all those numbers have been presented, and you guys know it, we're starting from the small and seeing how it really impacts our tax collection. And then we'll revisit that this time next year to see if a further exemption might be called for. Okay, discussion. Anybody have any comments?
I think it's a terrific idea.
Same.
Yeah, same.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion to approve adoption of a resident in over sixty-five disabled persons' homestead exemption from city ad-alarm taxation?
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve adoption of a resident over sixty-five homestead exemption from the city ad-alarm. Taxation.
Do I have a second?
All second.
Okay, all in favor of adoption of over sixty-five?
Unanimous.
Unanimous. All right, thank you. Okay, next is discussion, consideration, and take action to approve a lease purchase agreement for police tasers. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion to discuss, Mayor.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Chief, would you like to come up and talk just a little bit about it? And Kendall up on the board, did we ever get the other board working?
So currently, we do not have an intermediate weapon. We ask our officers to use either hands. There's no doubt that we need to have these weapons to save lives. Liability, liability, and liability. And this man's been very awesome, working with us, finding it when he sees the necessity that we need, he makes it work. We're very fortunate, we had a recent fundraiser that the community raised, I think twenty-one hundred dollars for us. This is a lease agreement, it's the newest thing that's going on out there. Back in my days, we buy them, and it's a lot of money, they're still a lot of money. But now it helps cities like us that are smaller, because we got the idea from Surfside. Kendall's got the number, he's twenty-five something up front, and then fifty-one, fifty-two hundred for the next four years. So we pretty much have the twenty-five hundred up front to get going. I'm asking you guys to prove this, we need to put these tasers in the hands of our officers, so it gives them another option instead of the option that none of them want to take. Again, liability, I can't speak enough on that.
Do we have enough? I know we added extra money for training this year.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have?
Yes, ma'am.
Money in scheduled training, I mean, once we get these?
Yes, ma'am, and one of our officers is currently certified to teach taser. They're already certified, all the officers are already certified, but they have to be recertified every year. So we already have an officer certified to teach it.
Okay, all right, great.
I have a question. It says that we're going to buy eight of them.
Yes, ma'am.
So, but we, I mean, at the most, we're going to have five officers, three on the beach, reserve, three in reserves on the beach, and then two possibly controlling the city. So if we have five available, why would we need eight?
Number one, the contract only allows, the smallest lease program is a minimum of eight. So, and the way it really works is each one of the full-time officers will have one. You normally assign that taser to them, they're responsible for that taser. We'll have one extra in case one goes down, or when the three guys are on the beach, one of them will carry a taser and have it nearby in case I start hollering, I need help. He comes and he says, "Taser, taser, taser." So, but that's why, each one of them will have their own, but at minimum, you have to have eight.
Okay, that makes sense.
Also, having been involved in law enforcement for a long time, it's like your pistol. Your pistol's your right hand, and you don't give that to anyone else. It's the same with the taser.
Even if they're all duties, if they work side jobs, they're, to take it away and say, "Put it up here, let someone else use it," all of a sudden, they start thinking, "I don't have..." So all the full-time officers have... So all the full-time officers have them assigned, they're all assigned, and one extra in case. The good thing about the lease agreement, Kendall read it up, that if it's damaged, broken, whatever, they replace it free as opposed to us having to buy another one. And I think he's got the numbers like twenty-nine hundred dollars apiece to purchase it.
So Chief, how did you go through the evaluation process of this? I mean, I'm not up on the technology and, you know, one company versus another.
There's only one. It's called, it used to be called taser, now it's called A-Action? Axon? Axon, something like that. So they bought, they bought them out. And I said, it just, we got very lucky. I went to see the chief in Surfside. He was kind enough to give us a couple of their old ones that they had. We were able to piece them together to make them work. And that's when he said, "Hey, we're doing a lease program. Do what?" And he gave us the contact, we called. It was a great, good meeting that I went, I'm glad I went to see him. It was the best program again. For someone like us, we don't have X amount of dollars to come up with upfront here that breaks it down for us in years. And like I said, the good thing is that they would damage them, they chase someone, they fall down, whatever it may be, it gets replaced immediately under the lease program for free, no charge, repaired, free.
It's a little bit sad that you don't already have it.
Yes, sir. And every text of the three, you know, Kendall's got a great question. The three tools we use nowadays are Aspaton, pepper gas, and the taser. Aspaton, the problem with that is only being able to see if someone beaten. We're trying to get away from that, okay? And the problem with pepper gas, and she knows her husband's a cop, when I spray, it sprays everybody. It's not for one person. So you imagine we spray somebody on the beach with it, and the kids that are downwading, a taser, when it points, it hits, it hits. That's great. That's the best tool. That's probably the number one tool going out there in law enforcement nationwide, intermediate tool.
I'm showing my, how do you put it back together after it's been discharged?
Okay, so you basically take the cartridge off. The cartridge comes separate.
And then you put it in a cartridge.
You get a new cartridge.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that our lease covered anything that had to happen.
And once it shoots, that cartridge comes off.
After it's discharged, if there wasn't some hidden, really expensive fee, you're like, putting it back together.
There's additional cartridges in the package.
Okay, all right. All right. Any other question, discussion, comments? No? Okay, can I have a motion to vote on approving a lease purchase agreement for police tasers?
Make a motion to approve a lease purchase agreement for police tasers.
I'll second that.
Okay, Melissa's got the second there. All right, all in favor of approving a lease purchase agreement for police tasers? All right.
Thank you.
You've got them, Chief.
Let's do the rush shipping.
Okay, next is discussion, consideration, and take action to approve the format and wording for a citizen survey for proposed beach user fee and consumption of alcohol on the beach. Do I have a motion to discuss a survey?
I'll make that motion to discuss the survey for the beach user fee.
And possibly take action.
Possibly take action.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I think everybody's seen it. So we are comments from Mr. Benthal and Ms. Sperring. What?
And I'll, I will add that these questions are purely something I put together as a discussion starter. I did have it a little bit longer at first, but I tried to reduce it to one page. I was worried that if it was too long, people may not want to answer them. I did add the section on the alcohol ban because that seemed to be a point that was brought up multiple times at the last meeting. And so I said, this is completely my creation and I'm just putting it out there for you guys to start a discussion.
Well, for someone that does oversee surveys in the workplace, I think you did a great job of keeping it with not a lot of questions because that way we could get more substance from that. And if anything else comes up, I think that's good. So I like the questions. I think, you know, if there's anything else we need to change on, but.
Any, any comments from the, the public comments received earlier? Of anything that might need to be incorporated or added there?
You know, we got some interesting additional questions, I guess, from the public. Potential survey questions. Are you aware that JB is the only beach on Galveston Island, which is driving us still currently loud? Let me see. Are there any problems with current beach management? That I thought was interesting. Total ban of open containers, which I don't know that that really.
So I can't drink a crock?
Lifeguards, that was one of them that I thought was interesting. Because there was no verbiage in there about lifeguards. It was just police presence, so.
I thought there was.
That's lifeguard jam, didn't we?
I thought there was.
It was on there and.
It's on there right now.
Yeah, yeah, in parentheses.
In parentheses.
Okay, good.
And yes, it could measure the lifeguard.
Security that would cover, you know, anything safety and security with lifeguards, please.
Any, any thoughts on, I mean, I mean, Mr. Benthal proposed having a more detailed, comprehensive plan first, before the survey. It seems to me like that's putting the carton for the horse, but.
I feel like the survey should come first to get the, to raise the plan and then probably come in with the plan.
Okay, all right.
Well, the one thing that was concerning me too was that I've had a lot of people reach out to me, you know, in the neighborhood. But, I mean, I don't see people up here, so I don't know if they, you know, want to put themselves forward so much, but they have a lot of opinions. And, and those opinions are valid, obviously. So again, I, I guess the, one of the challenges that I've heard about is, okay, if it's not as comprehensive, then maybe I'm not heard. But there's got to be a point where you have to cut it off. You can't just have a survey that goes on forever. So maybe, maybe we have a section in there where they can put their own comments if they don't want to provide it any other way. They can do it in the survey process.
He's got, on both parts, has it written.
Yeah, additional information that they want to hand.
And I guess, I guess we could capture a little bit about what do you see as the biggest issues, concerns with the beach, or that's too open-ended?
Yeah, too open.
And, and people would write seventeen pages.
You really have to ask something that's definitive.
Okay.
Or it's not really certain.
If it's too, if it's too open-ended.
Well, number four, number four is pretty open. What additional information would you need to make an informed decision? Yeah, it's, they guess, they could write a book on that.
Yeah, I think, I know that, I got a lot of emails as well wanting the survey to be longer, but I think with number four on both sections, it's open. It doesn't need to be longer. If you want to write more, you can write, tell us what you think.
Yeah, I said it didn't need to be on there too, but we're to consensus, right? One of the things I, I would really like to suggest, because as we know, part of it is that our citizens have asked a lot of questions.
Gil, I have to ask you not to swivel your chair as much.
Okay.
We have had a lot of comments that these mics are very effective at picking up background noise.
Okay.
And people are having hearing, you talk because you're addressing all of us while you talk, so.
Yes, what I'm doing, yeah.
Maybe, maybe head turning rather than chair turning. Okay, keep going, thank you.
Okay, we'll go to head turning.
I want people to be able to hear you. That, that's not important. They can, we'll find it.
Yeah, the thing is that, don't you think all of them, we should attach the plan to the survey? I mean, that way the public actually sees what the survey is about. And what the plan is about. I mean, a lot of things we get is, right? We get a lot of questions that hopefully we put it out there, they would understand it.
I mean, Pam's not in the audience tonight, our IT specialist, but we could probably put a link that it wouldn't bog down the survey, but if someone felt they needed to read the entire plan before answering the survey, they could go, go access it. But if it's attached to the survey, I'm afraid people might feel like they, they had to read it before they could give a qualified opinion.
If it's available on the website, they can, they can go there and go read it. Somebody else that might feel, oh, I'm good with just the, this here, and they can just.
Because a lot of the questions that I get and I see are answered in the body of the plan. However, how do you, how do we intend on putting it out? Is it going to be electronic?
So the conversations we've had, and Kendall, you're going to have to jump in here. I know you and Pam have had additional conversations, is we were going to notify folks of the availability of the survey through JBIC email, correct? That is our most up-to-date. And also, we are working with JBIC and the Water Department to refresh that list a little bit. And it's the best we got as far as telling people it's out there. And then Pam was going to build a site on the website where people go and access it. And the form that, that I've heard about, Kendall will jump in here. I know you and Pam have had a lot more conversation about it. And if you want to take over here, and I'm, I know she's run it by you a lot.
What we discussed, concern was how you control who is responding. And, and so we were looking at an option that we could put the survey on the city website and that you would have to enter an address and probably most likely your water bill, your account number. And then we can, when the survey's complete, we can cross-reference those to make sure they're valid. Now, it limits you to one response per household. And so that's, that is something whether or not you guys want to do that. But I do think it's important that we control how many, who is responding. And it's only residents or property owners, I guess.
Property owners.
So that's why, that's why we thought the water bill, the account number of the water bill would be the easiest way. Like I said, then we could cross-reference it between that and the, the addresses to do a V lookup. And we'd be able to, be able to verify the survey and validate it. And so that was, that was our, that was kind of our plan. Now the, how long you want to leave it open? You know, obviously we'll blast it on social media, you know, we can utilize JBIC to send out information, Blackboard, whatever. But I think that's probably the best plan that we have available to us.
But it is, just to make sure everybody's aware, it is one vote per household. So if you live in a split residence, y'all are going to have to negotiate your joint opinion.
And I suppose, I suppose where it says what additional information if you're entry, you can say. I'm saying yes, but my, my wife and three kids say no.
I say in the original survey, it was done, it was done by JBIC, which meant that it was completely impartial.
Yes.
It was sent out electronically because they have everybody's address. And they replied directly to what was sent out. They answered it. So it was captured.
Well, part of the.
And there was no question about, you know.
Yeah. If, if we do it on our website, then our IT specialist has the ability to put it in a more form, format that makes it much easier to compile the data and, and do different data analysis with it. And then also on the website, it is, it is controlled. We know that the person answering, most likely, is the person that lives at that address and has access to the water bill. Not, not somebody who has a very strong opinion about no alcohol on the beach. And they're going to go.
I'm okay with that. This is, so in other words, they're going to go on to the website and vote.
Yes.
Okay.
And we're going to.
But they have to prove that, that it's a legitimate vote.
Yes.
And it could be just as much as having a code that goes out with the water bill or that they receive.
It's a unique account number.
Address and account number.
And then, and then we can look it up. The, the address is going to be dropped down for the street. So you can't spell it wrong, which makes it hard to V lookup to compare. So, you know, it would also mean you can't kind of mess up your street address. That consistency helps with data manipulation. So that's, that's the plan right now. We just need, you know, are people okay with one vote per water bill? Is one, one vote per household. Well, two people live in a house, you know, and people, people get them.
One address, one vote.
I have a question about long-term renters, residents, though, that they don't own the house, but they're long lease tenants, I guess. Would they get the vote or is it the property, the person that owns the home?
Owner.
The owner.
Unless they're paying the water bill.
Unless they're paying the water.
The house I've ever rented, I pay the water.
Good point.
Yeah.
Which is tied to the address, so.
You, you do have multiple property owners, or an owner who owns multiple properties, who would, I mean, would have the potential for multiple votes, but.
Long-term lease person that's in the home. Just didn't know if that would be their opportunity to vote or would it be that property owner? And you make a point, some people do own more than one owner.
It's much cleaner with the property owner, of course. There's no question.
But then they, well, I guess they get multiple votes if they, for each property.
Yeah, they do.
Put driver's license.
I just think that some, I think at some point, the people that are, the, the lease, they want to have that voice also. So since they live there long-term. Just a thought.
And then how many is it each door?
I have one on my screen. There's, there's several that own multiple properties. What do you think, Tina? Twenty, twenty people that own?
Yeah, they're.
About twenty, about twenty that have more than one?
Not more than fifty, but there are owners that have multiple properties. So, you know, you guys need to take that into consideration.
Can you remove it again?
From a name?
Right.
But I think.
Their long-term.
Anonymous, we're not actually putting, putting names on it or trying to keep their comments completely confidential and anonymous.
But, but if they have.
You see what I'm saying?
Water account. Then it's most likely not the.
They're not short-term, they're not short-term.
You know.
That's right.
It is, it is the, it is the person, it is the person in the home.
Yeah, I'm just speaking about long-term rentals, not short-term.
The term in that.
I'm just talking about long-term rentals, not the short-term. I'm just talking about, there's, you know, I, I neighbors.
I suppose we could, we could add a question asking if you're a long-term renter. And if you are, then we could, we could reach out. We, we could, we could allow that exception. You know, if, if a property owner put in information and said, "My home is rented", then we can figure out a way to let them have a vote. But then the question is, you're going to have two votes for that household, one for the renter and one for the owner.
Well, then they, maybe we can have a box. Are they the owner or are they the long-term renter? And that way you can at least realize them.
I don't have any. How, how many long-term renters do we have?
I, I don't know offhand, Mayor, to be quite honest with you. That is a report that we could work with ABR now that we're, where we're at with ABR. That's something that we can definitely bring to their attention. The, at the present time, the report, that report is ready for, to be sent over to Pam. Um, and so when she gets back on Monday, her and I are going to meet and sit down and, uh, make sure that the information that I provided for her is exactly what she wants. So.
I think we also should find a way to not allow multiple, if you own multiple addresses, to have multiple votes. Because it's the same like our elections. You don't get to vote five times for a city council or mayor because you own five houses. You get one coming in and one going in.
I agree.
Or if it's a company that owns multiple houses, we'll do it then.
One vote.
It shouldn't affect short, I mean, it shouldn't, we're just trying to think logistically how we-
So she's gonna, Pam's gonna have to put the numbers, right? The account number's gonna have to match to something, are you?
Yeah, she's gonna do a V lookup that the, that the water account-
Could she restrict certain account numbers?
Can she restrict the account numbers?
I would, I would caution against restricting anybody because that, that's, that's, that puts a bad light-
Everybody should have a fair and consistent opportunity.
I don't think we should restrict.
There's also an option I looked into. You can rent a kiosk that we could put here, that you can load it with whatever survey you want. You can put it here at city hall or the park or whatever and still require the same information. People could come, do it that way. I don't know if that solves the problem of multiple homeowners or the renters. But maybe if you have to put a driver's license in there or something, I don't know. Just another layer of, uh, screening.
I think that just like regular elections, it's on your honor, you know? If you, and we ask people, if you own multiple homes, please only vote once. Well, we could-
We saw how that honor worked out at the, uh, uh, town hall when we gave the stickers. It said, you know, people were putting all their stickers, their kid stickers and everything else on one thing. But I don't know if the honor system is, I'd love to say that's the best plan. But I don't believe in reality.
Okay, well, we will, my takeaway from this is, uh, go ahead, Gary.
Thank you, thank you. We're gonna have someone in staff monitoring this, right? I mean, it, couldn't it be a designated person? Should we have a full-time rental person that's been renting here for a year or so? Couldn't they just come up and, and talk with, say, the city administrator? He could validate if, you know, if he tells if they qualify. And let them vote, let them vote, he could witness it. I think there are very few of them, right?
What about the voter rule? Is there a voter rule? We could use that database?
Uh-
Whoever would vote those?
Yeah, but, but we have so many, so many of our property owners aren't registered voters here because it's on their home site or where they reside.
Yeah.
Part-time in order, it's, it's not where they claim their voter.
Sure, that would have a descriptive order.
Um, well, what I'm, what I'm hearing as a takeaway is we like the survey as it's stated. Um, we're okay with notification to JBIC, uh, followed with website posting. But we need to resolve a way to, I, I'm not as concerned about if the long-term renter votes or if the property owner votes. Um, the, the property owner, if they go to try to take the survey and they don't have a valid water bill because they long-term rent their home, we can put a note, uh, you know, this is costly haul, right? And, you know, in that instance, I, I guess we could, we either prohibit long-term renters from voting, which I don't think is right. Or in that instance, we allow two votes for that property. You get one if you rent here and you get one if you're a homeowner here. Or we just say, if, if, if you're- Okay, well then, then, then my suggestion would be the people that live here take the vote.
Yeah.
The, because they're the one, they're the ones can be actually going to the beach and hanging the beach. It's not gonna be the homeowner because he doesn't live here. So I would say for long-term renters, I mean, that's my, I'm, I'm not-
Yeah, just let them come in and verify if they own a long-term deal.
Well, they'll be, they won't, they won't need to, they have a water bill.
Right.
If, if the homeowner has a water bill and they wish to vote, then they need to negotiate with the homeowner.
Yes.
On, uh, because it's not gonna take a name, it's not gonna take an email address. It's gonna take a water bill and an address.
Something that's gonna validate.
And if you don't have those, then you negotiate with new datas on who's gonna get the vote.
That thing's perfect.
I agree with you, Mayor, because I think if they want the, they want a voice that bad, they're gonna make the effort to get with the, I just think it's important to you, I agree with you, that they should have a voice as well. So, because they enjoy our good beach, they'll be there to enjoy.
But, um, the, the bigger question, and, and Kendall, I'll just start you and Pam on figuring out how to do it, is to only allow one, if you own multiple properties. Uh, I mean, it, it sounds like we're concerned about a single person getting multiple votes because they own multiple properties.
But I, I could, I might be able to figure out, who owns multiple properties? But I don't, I'm not sure I can say that, you know, I'm, I am a long-term renter and I believe my landlord has multiple properties, multiple long-term properties.
Yes.
Um, so I, I don't know how I would, or we would be able to determine, you know, which is which.
Um-
Beyond the fact that, uh, we know who they are.
Well, for, uh, here again, it goes back to if you're a long-term renter, then, I, I mean, I think we can do lookups. I mean, one of the, one of the issues is, as I've been going through all the short-term rental information, a lot of times when people own multiple properties, they're in different LLCs or different trusts or different, you know, like the trust owns this house and, uh, an LLC owns this house. But they're basically the same group. They're just all kinds of shadow companies and, and all kinds of other investment mechanisms. So, um, I, I guess-
Well, I was saying, so one thing that, that I've been kicking around is what, what if there's an overwhelming demand against a user fee? Then what do we do, you know, what, what's the next steps? Do we just can all of this? Or do we look at, okay, they want, the community is wanting certain amenities or not wanting the amenities. They may not want alcohol, they may want alcohol. Do we address that independently of a user fee? They want, I mean, that's-
It affects the vote on the user fee, is that right?
Yeah, because I, I just, I just want us to think about that, right? Because that's, that's a possibility, right?
They want a bathroom, but they don't want a seat.
Right.
That, that's why I really wanted to, if you want to include it, include it. I think it'll influence people. They won't get a vote on, on, on the user fee. And I think people, I suspect people don't understand that what we're doing with the GLO is just, just getting approval for a user fee at a certain rate. And then this council will make up the rest of the rules. I don't think they really understand that.
Well, I, I have one question on here that said, um, and I removed it. It said, "Would you be in favor of a beach user fee if bathrooms were required?" Um, and I, I removed that, but, um-
Same with the alcohol. So there's so many people are gonna say, "No." You know, "I don't want," you know, or, you know, I mean, it's gonna influence the, revoke, combine things. That one could override, you've got a good point.
That's my concern, right? It's kind of segregating some of this a little bit so that we can understand. Because it, it kind of muddies the water when you kind of, you conflate some of these things.
The other thing is, I'll just say it the last time, is that was what's so simplistic and effective about the way the JBIC polled it last time. One email to one owner that's paying taxes or paying homeowner page, right? And they answered that email. You know, the survey, it was right there in the email. All they did was turn around and answer it.
Yeah, and then we have thirteen hundred responses to call and go through.
We got, one hundred and fifty-eight is what we had last time.
But, but we have, we have, we have-
Okay, I'm, whatever you say, I just think it's too much.
We have, we have two thousand, we have two thousand properties, um, in Jamaica Beach.
They had the same thing before. The number of property owners have not changed. We got a hundred and fifty-eight responses. Very direct, very straightforward, easy to count.
With a hundred and fifty-eight, but if we get-
Yeah, that's a small sample, though, and is that scalable, right? That's, that's why-
I don't know what we'll get, I, I mean, we're making assumptions.
Well, my question is, if you only get a hundred and fifty-eight out of two thousand, is that even, is that even something you can validate against?
Sort of saying it's too small a sample.
I agree.
And you can't scale from that because it could be, but it also would show that the interest is there.
To go through all this other math.
Well, the last primary is, well, only eighteen percent of the entire Galveston County voted.
Votes, yeah.
I think it's important for people to remember too, when they're thinking about this entire issue, is we kind of had a test run of this already when with Galveston, during COVID, Galveston closed every single beach and the only beach in the state of Texas that was open was our beach. So we have a test case for what's about to happen around us with Galveston closing all the beaches. I mean, that cars parked all up and down the neighborhood because everybody's coming from everywhere. So if we end up as the only beach with cars-
We're gonna have free parking up and down their streets.
Then we have the data, the test case that shows what is our community's gonna experience.
So can we do the same thing on a, a smaller basis? We ban alcohol for a month? See what impact that does?
I don't think you want to put the whole, at least the temporary laws aside.
But, you know, how do you?
I do think that we need to separate the two ideas. Do just a beach user fee. We can lay, we'll have already the groundwork to be able to do a second survey for alcohol banning alcohol on the beach.
And bathrooms.
Or bath, or adding bathrooms. But we'll already have that foundation set. So we could send out two or three or fi, or, you know, two or three different surveys and only get just that answer. So that it's, it's because it does just make it too, too much to answer in just one survey.
It is too much.
Respectfully disagree, it's only five questions.
It's expensive, it's a science major to figure it out.
I don't think the survey's too complicated. I think the delivery method of survey is the struggle.
A good, normal survey is eight questions or less. And I agree with Brandon, I mean, Alden and Derp and Dermot on this. I just, I think it's just to get a benchmark.
To put into a plan that we're then gonna bring for discussion, vote and otherwise. This is not the plan. This is just like, what do we want to focus on?
Well, then let's change the question. So it says, "Do you support the implementation, implementation of a beach user fee, period?"
Yes or no?
Right?
Good point.
Knock off the, is this what I'm saying? Yes, we're just adding a lot of additional things. So we're not very clear in separating out the, I think that we could do it with one survey. But we have to do, we have to segregate it a little bit so that it's clear.
I think it's a big, I think it's showing soluention there.
A yes and a no?
I think the moment you put the alcohol in there, it's gonna influence.
I think there's too many variables in what is in a beach user fee for someone to definitively say yes or no. And I, and I go back to the bathrooms. And if you have to include bathrooms, what's your answer, yes or no? If we don't have to, what's your answer, yes or no?
Sure.
Um, if it demanded, if we demanded alcohol, banning alcohol, would that change your opinion?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Because it gives a clearer picture of what people are thinking. I mean, this is, when you, when you kind of combine some of these, it doesn't, it doesn't work because you're not really sure where they're coming from.
Yeah, where they're coming from. Are they voting against the plan because they, they want alcohol on the beach? Or do they even understand that the plan has nothing to do with that decision?
Exactly right. That's, that's a good point. Because they may agree with one aspect of it and not the other because they're combined.
Hey, I don't want, I, I, I want alcohol on the beach, I'm voting against everything.
Right.
It's gonna influence, and I'm sorry, it is. It just, we're not gonna get the answers we need.
Well, one thing, it will start the conversation. That's what the survey is meant to do, is find out what people's thoughts are.
Well, yeah, that's a good, yeah, it's a good way to do it. I mean, and, and that's what we're doing, but-
Because for instance, we don't need to have, we don't need to have, as I understand it, we don't have to have bathrooms to have a beach user fee.
We do now. GLO does not require us to have bathrooms.
So by adding the bathroom question-
I have that in an email.
People may, may say no to a beach user fee because they feel that we have to have bathrooms.
Exactly.
So it's three different questions. Beach user fee, alcohol and bathrooms. Three different separate yes or nos. They have nothing to do with each other.
Yeah, and then what you get through the GLO part, just with the fee, then put out the big survey for what, for the things that you have to decide on as a councilwoman.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Very direct, sir.
Because the tough work is gonna be right in here or later on.
So maybe, uh, don't approve the survey.
And just let JBIC run it.
Yes.
It goes directly and they get them straight answer right back.
I think we need to reach a little bit.
I, uh, the, the JBIC method, if for some reason you don't have a valid email address or you don't look at your email address so often, half the time, half the time, a lot of our people can't seem to access email. So, um, you know, it's, I don't know that it's-
It's a problem.
No, we can.
Well, you can, but you can JBIC and then go to the website also.
Yes.
Let them know, look at your JBIC email.
I think the survey needs to be on the website. Um, because it's, it's more, we can put it in a form that allows easier data validation and data verification. So if we rely on people to go to their emails, scroll through, and then, and then also somebody has to compile that data and take it from an email response into a presentable analytic tool. I mean, they just have to. Um, and so that's, that's a lot of extra work. So the, the method of on the website with different methods to tell people, "Go here and take the survey", I, I, I personally like that approach. The, the JBIC email out is, is gonna be very hard to-
And hard on JBIC.
And hard on JBIC. And, and there's no, there's no way, if, if you think about being able to prove integrity of the survey, there's no way to say that she captured absolutely every email that was returned to her, right? She could have deleted any she wanted to. I don't have a control in place. On the website, it's, it's controlled.
And we'll have access to do it again and again and again if we use our-
And it's easier to communicate on social media with the link.
Okay, so what I'm, but, but I think Brandon's right. I, I think right now, Kendall, we might need to take another stab at, at-
I don't have a clue what you guys want, huh?
But what, what I heard was to, to separate it and not ask the question about alcohol at this time. Uh, because alcohol is not the required component of our beach user fee. So the, the lower part of the survey goes away.
Bathrooms are here.
That's what I'm hearing. I'm not done yet, Gil. So, um, the, if we look at the, the top part, um-
I think question one is good. Question two could just be yes, no. I don't know that we gained anything from five levels of, of the review necessarily. Um... I don't see any issue with number three, really. I don't see any issue with numbers three really. Unless you just want to.
I, I mean, I think it's good data, right?
Not, not hurting.
I don't think it's hurting anything either. I think it's good data makes people feel they have, they have a voice for an opinion.
It also has a write-in option as well.
And then I think.
You could also segregate that, the, the first part of three, it doesn't even have to say if a beach user fee were implemented. It could just say, which of the following improvements would you like to see funded?
Agreed.
Yep.
That's, that's what I'm talking about. We're, we're like jamming things in with each other when it should be segregated. You know, because we've really got to determine people's stance on user fee and amenities and, you know, conduct or, you know.
I, I, another thing to interject, if I may.
You absolutely can.
I have to pull. Oh, and. Let's, let's just run the first half and, and let's, let's, you know, let's, let's take some various recommendations, and I think being very straightforward is good. And let's run it for two weeks. All right, and then let's run the, follow it up after we got that. Let's follow it up with the type of survey we need here in, in council to establish beach rules. You know, because we can do that whether or not the beach fee is approved or not. We've still got to make these rules. You know, even if the taxpayer still has to pay, that's what we're talking about it. The taxpayer has to pay for us to maintain that beach, our taxpayers. You know, it's, it's part of their tax levy.
But that's not accurate.
Excuse me?
That's not accurate. Property taxes don't pay for the beach.
That's right.
Hot taxes, hotel occupancy tax.
Yeah, but, but, but that allows us to mitigate, right, the use of property taxes.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't, you can't tell people that their property taxes are paying for it because it's not.
I agree with Kendall. But I suspect that in the future, we'll become more and more, um, you know, because we're such a special city and we're different. I think we'll start working on it too, but.
The, the, the majority of the beach is maintained through hot tax. But it is still maintained through city taxes. But it's not your property tax. It's through hotel, hotel tax.
It's still part of the city taxes.
It's still part of the city taxes.
And we may find even better uses, which is taxed dollars to mitigate with the, with the, with the fee. We make it more impactful, better use for the dollars in the future.
Yes, we may.
We certainly should.
So indirectly, it's tied to, but not directly.
Because we can't, he's right, we can't say it correctly.
Pull it to something, you know, one button, still have to fill it with something else, right, so.
I just hope we come up end of the year, you know, we have to raise taxes, right? Have to raise levy.
That's a whole other.
Yes.
That's a whole other topic.
Kendall, do you have a clear notion on the updated, uh, survey?
Yeah. Uh, now, um, um, so how long, how long do you think it, it should be posted for? I mean, how long should we give people to, and, and ob- obviously, um, well, not obviously. So right now, I have one left, left alone. Two will become a yes, no question. Three will, um, start with which of the following improvements, and still lists the same, and then four remains unchanged.
Yes.
Are we in agreement with that then?
Yes.
So we could, we could approve that survey in that form. How long would you, how long would you like it to be?
Three weeks.
Or between council meetings, maybe, so we could discuss the results at the next meeting?
Well, it's a holiday. We have to have.
It's a holiday.
And then they're gonna have to compile all of it. And then we have to compile it, be able to present it in a way that makes sense.
I think it's three to four weeks, like, as people are vacation.
Well, if we do, if we do three weeks, then we have a week to compile.
That's right.
So we're talking about presenting at the.
Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth. So why twenty-fifth? Yes.
Okay, so, um, we will attempt to release it on July first. That's Monday.
That's awesome.
That's awesome.
But I don't, but I don't just. I don't, I don't think that's. I'm not sure, that's what I'm saying, I'm not sure we can, but.
I, I think we can probably release it by Wednesday, the third. Uh, I mean, our, our, you know, Pam, our team was already playing around.
If it ended on the nineteenth, that's two and a half weeks.
Uh, yeah, that would work. Yeah, that would work. And then that gives staff a week to compile.
Yeah, they can do it. They can do anything.
And I know, and I know she'll be cross referencing and, and taking care of those issues as we have.
Hopefully the compilation will not be difficult. We'll see. What we'll, we'll learn from this one. We'll learn from this one. For a time again.
So we need to make a motion to approve with revisions.
Yes, we do.
I'll make a motion to approve with revisions, with the due date of July.
Twenty.
Twenty-fifth. So where are those revisions? I, I don't know. I'm voting on here. I'd like to see that before I.
It's, uh. Okay, question number one will remain the same. Question number two, the answers will only be yes or no. Question number three was, will, this first clause will be removed. We will start with word which, and leave the same answers, and then four will remain the same. Part two will be stricken from the, from the survey.
The bottom half of the survey's gone.
And it'll, and it'll start on, we'll put it out July third.
We're gonna do a motion to suggest.
And then we'll be due July twenty-fifth. It'll be finished by July twenty-fifth.
Well, uh, the survey will be complete on the nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
The results of the survey will be presented to council on the twenty-fifth.
Question number two, I said, do you support the implementation of a beach user fee, question mark, and then strike the rest of it?
And that'd be yes or no, I guess.
Yes or no, right? Okay, and.
So it's gonna stop at user fee?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll remove to help maintain improved beach facilities?
Okay.
Okay.
Could you blow that up a little bit?
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Hey, hey. Okay, go ahead, Eric. Question, question number two?
It will, it'll be, do we support the implementation of a beach user fee, question mark, yes?
Question number three.
Right. Number three, you will eliminate that opening clause, and it will start with which? So which of the following improvements would you like to see funded?
Got you.
And then question four remains unchanged.
Yes.
Part number two will be stricken from the.
Survey.
And the rest of it, it goes away.
Turned out. Uh, I have one comment from the, the audience. Can you, can you stand, I'm sorry, I'm gonna make you stand up and walk up. We've had feedback that people listening in, your voices aren't picking up.
Okay, Ralph McCarver, one six seven, one five seven, why don't you make question number five? Do you support a ban on alcohol consumption on beach, yes or no? That doesn't go through the whole list. It just, it's just a question. That'll be the next survey.
No, I, it's not. It's not, it's not an idea.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a nice idea.
I don't have a problem with that. It's a stand-alone question, right?
Stand-alone question.
Now, very own to stand-alone. And then that answers that. We know where to go next.
Yeah.
Yep. Good suggestion.
Thank you.
Mr. McDermott.
Ms. Jones, yes.
Ginger Jones, one six six, one two, probably. Uh, you were talking about the long-term rentals. They, they probably pay their own water bills. My sister has one out here. And they pay all their own utilities. So that would solve that problem. S T Rs, I don't know.
Just for a long time.
I'd still like to see anything on the alcohol on it because my concern is current employment.
I don't, I, I think if we put it at the bottom as a stand-alone question.
Why don't we do the second survey with all the other things?
Because it's a whole nother effort to send out, to compile. People, people.
And so you would not do another survey?
We might not. We might not need to.
The way it's worded as a number five, it doesn't mention anything about a user fee. It's just.
I agree.
Here are the five issues independently. What do you think?
Yeah.
I agree.
I agree with adding Mr. McDermott's question to the survey.
Okay, so does it become number five, or does number four become number five as a wrap-up?
Yes.
Four becomes number five to finalize it. Would that be the final thought? Can you limit the characters so it doesn't become a whole?
I just think it can, 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 I'm sorry.
I, I, I think, I, I think people are, I, I, I personally think people are intelligent enough to separate the two. I think if it's worked that way, I think I agree.
It's a simple question. We're just getting a response. Just a, no, we're, it's a benchmark.
I, I mean, I understand your concern, Gil, but I, I think in this instance, it's.
What if I was to add the words independent of a beach user fee?
Because we're doing something else that.
And was that a question?
Excuse me?
What if I added the wording, independent of a beach user fee, do you support a ban on alcohol consumption on the beach?
Yeah.
I, I, I like that. Yes.
That, that would help clarify that it has nothing to do with the beach user fee.
Yep, that's perfect. I like that. Okay.
I was just making.
Do I, do I have a motion?
That's all we're doing. We're pleasing.
Do I make that motion, Mayor, to?
Um, and we already, we already have that motion.
We do. Okay. Do I, did, did I get a second?
I, I will second it.
Okay. Uh, okay, all in favor of supporting the survey going out targeted by July third with the amendments as stated. The amendments to include question number one, as is. Question number two, uh, simplified with just a yes or no on supporting a beach user fee. Question number three, streamlined to not include the first part to start with which of the following improvements would you like to see funded? Question number four will be independent of a beach user fee. Do you, so, Kendall, can you, do you support, you, do you support a ban on alcohol?
Inde- independent of a beach user fee, do you support a ban on consumption, on alcohol consumption on the beach?
Okay, thank you. And then number, um.
Five.
Five becomes what additional information would you need as written? Make a point. Okay, all in favor of that survey going out? All right. All opposed?
For the one.
Okay.
For who cares?
All right. We've got a debate to see folks, so.
Yes, please.
Next is discussion and consideration of entering into an agreement with the major short-term rental booking platforms to cancel Jamaica Beach listings that do not have valid registration numbers, and to automatically collect the city's portion of the hotel occupancy tax. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion to discuss.
I'll say.
All right. So, um, Kendall, do you, is this the area?
Um, I can, I can try to lead the way. Um, so we have, we've had some conversations with, um, particularly Airbnb and, Airbnb and VRBO, um, about what assistance they could provide in helping us to, um, in, ensure compliance and also possibly collect, uh, hotel occupancy tax. So the first part of the discussion was to, um, cancel listings that do not have valid registration numbers. So as we, um, as we are trying to enforce active registrations, part of our ordinance requires that that regi, that current registration be, number be placed on any of their listings. Um, and we do our best to try to monitor that, you know, in multiple ways. Um, but, um, it's been indicated that these major platforms, if we, um, enter into an agreement with them, that all we would have to do is notify them that Esther's S T R is no longer valid. They will, they will delete that listing from their platforms, which is not just Airbnb and VRBO, but it, it, they're conglomerate.
There's a thing with most of, there's booking.com, TripAdvisor, and they, they all get it together.
And so the, the major, the major listing sites, um, would then, would then delete those, those, um, S T R, would, would prevent them from being able to make further book, further bookings until they've complied with our ordinance to, to re-register and properly register. Um, the other portion of that is that, uh, there's been a lot of confusion about, uh, collection of hotel occupancy tax. Um, many of the, we believe that many of the, um, S T Rs are not aware or not properly collecting our local portion of the, of the hotel occupancy tax. They, um, they're listed with VRBO and those, those major sites automatically collect for the state of Texas and remit to the state of Texas, but they do not automatically collect the local portion. So we do think there's some confusion on the owner's parts that they believe they are collecting those taxes and they're being remitted. Um, but we, um, through our discussions, we know that that's, that's not accurate. Those major listing platforms are not remitting any of the local taxes to us.
There was some thought that maybe some of the tax was going to Galveston, but we've had the opportunity to do a lot more research into that, and we could not find any evidence that, that any of that's going.
Most of these, these sites are geolocated, and they use geo-fencing to determine the, the taxing. So we thought there was a possibility, our proximity to Galveston or the confusion sometimes with the zip codes, that maybe some of the taxes were being sent to Galveston, but we feel almost a hundred percent positive that's, that's not taking place.
Yeah.
So, uh, so there are two separate discussions, um.
We don't have to do both of these, right? It says and, but, but we can do either one independent of the other, or we can do them both together.
Yeah. Right now, we're, we work very hard to try to, to make sure collections are taking place and, and, um, in my opinion, I think moving to this, moving to an agreement with the major listing platforms, um, is the right step. Galveston does that. I mean, talking with their park board, they saw a significant increase in their collections. Um, the drawback is they get it essentially in one month's sum. It doesn't delineate that each of you paid your portion of the tax. They just know that taxes were collected by VRBO and they were remitted. Um, but they did see a substantial increase in amounts collected.
They can't, the, the homeowner can't, uh, interpret what they think the city needs. Um, uh, yeah, because there's also a lot of confusion with our S T Rs on technically the fif, the, our nine percent needs to be applied to pet deposits, pet fees, and cleaning fees. And a lot of vendors interpret that differently. Uh, they don't, they don't look at that as a taxable service. So, um.
Now, there are still independent listings, so this would not cover all listings. Um, but I kind of see it as stepping over a dollar to pick up a dime, or, because it takes a lot of effort on, on our small staff to be able to track these and try to collect, accurately collect these monies. Um, and so I think it would be a, you know, a great step in that direction. And as far as the compliance end of it, any, any, yeah, the de-listing. That's a, that's as big a penalty as any, but I mean.
As anything we can do.
Yeah, because quite honestly, they can continue to list or post theirs on their sites, and if we don't catch them, then they can continue to book. With this agreement, um, they're gonna be banned from those sites until, until they're current. And so I, I think that's an absolute no-brainer to do that.
Yeah, yeah. Now, the, the deal with the collecting the hotel, motel tax, um, it, it takes away a tool we have, um, to, to maybe, um, put some replication or. To, to maybe, um, put some revocation or? Our ordinance says if you don't pay your hotel motel tax? And if you have three violations of our short-term rental ordinance, your permit is revoked for six months, right? And, um, that does take away one tool for potential revocation. However, as Kendall's pointed out, when you look at the, the effort? That staff employs to try to collect these taxes, uh, it is a lot. And, um, and without doing full audits of their books? Many of the homeowners are interpretive in what they send us. So, um, I, I do expect our revenue to go up. But recognize that we lose one tool. But, um, and then the other thing is, we, we still have the right per our hot tax ordinance? To go require audits if we know or learn of certain homes that are, that are using other sites. So San and C has their own, their own booking, but San and C is a very honest, good organization. Most of the rental platforms where people would go and book directly with the rental, if it's a rental agency, they're pretty good. But a lot of homeowners are getting very, very savvy and they're building their own websites. And somebody comes and rents from your home and they say, don't go book with Airbnb next time. Come book through my own private site and I can give you a better rate. So right now, we don't have plans on how to capture that. But on the percen- we're not capturing that now anyway. Right? So, uh, what are we losing? Nothing.
These are just challenges that we face.
Challenges we face.
Mayor, I've been on the Galveston Short-Term Rental Task Force for a year or more now. And I, um, because Kate Terry is a personal friend of mine and she worked with the park board for many years. I watched her, um, through videos when she went to legislature and lobbied for Galveston? To, um, get this ordinance passed. So I've watched this for a long time and I came to the previous administrations and brought this up. I brought it to you when you were first. And, uh, and I'm so delighted to see this because the success that they've had with it is overwhelming.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm gonna suggest that we, um, do this on both sides of it.
Okay, so this was for discussion, right? And, uh, and I guess any, what other, what other discussion comment?
Are there any costs associated with this, do they charge us any fees? It's just, we just have to sign up for it.
Yeah. It's like a ninety day, uh, we have to pass it, send it to him and then there is a.
An implementation time, so it doesn't just happen tomorrow?
We're not, we're not gonna catch most of summer taxes. Right? It's, this won't be in place, um, if we bring it forward with, uh, I mean? Staff is already working the actual ordinance language and putting it together. But we will bring it with council concurrents, we will bring it forward to the next meeting for approval. Um, and then we have about ninety days beyond that that it takes to implement it. So it will be October time, regular time.
But to answer your question, there's no cost to us besides staff work?
Reduced staff work.
I'm relieved, but still, it's something to crank it in.
Yes, yes, we have to, we have to follow it and implement it, yes.
The end goal is that it's gonna reduce staff time.
Yes. Now, currently, our home, our STR owners have to, to report through their website what they've. A monthly report of what they've earned anyway.
Yeah.
So again, we'll be back to the honor system that they'll, you know, they're gonna report monthly or do we, is it quarterly? Quarterly, quarterly.
Quarterly.
Um, and, but they just won't have, and, so. So if they want a data, uh, really honest, they would be still sending a check to the city?
If they, if they rented through other sites.
Through, or personally, you know, rented it to someone. They could still remit that money that way.
Or they still, still keep that historic data on these sites though for the properties? So that when we do, you know, give them our database of, of properties and STR licenses or permits? We can capture that, I mean, you were saying we wouldn't collect it, but automatically, but they would, would they should be able to share that history? I mean, they have the booking history, right?
Oh, yes.
So we would still be able to confirm that against, you know, whatever's been remitted to us?
I don't know that they'll pass that to us, no.
They won't.
Not, not moving forward. Moving forward, we're just gonna get one lump check from Airbnb, one from VRBO, one from booking.com, one from TripAdvisor.
Okay.
One lump sum.
Cause I mean, if they're recording that history, then.
They are, it's kind of, it takes a subpoena to get it.
Okay.
And so I was gonna say, we're, we're exploring other avenues to look at some of.
Backwards.
Okay, that's what I was curious about, you know.
Yes, we are, we are, we are looking, um, staff has found ways? That, uh, we can get actual booking information and not rely on the homeowner to provide their, their books. So, um, we're working with legal right now and the booking sites to, to figure, to figure out if we can get that data going backwards.
But we still are gonna have outliers, right?
There'll be a few, yeah.
But that's good, I mean, we will have them. And that's, we're talking about there's something.
Oh, when we find them, then, you know, then we have just any gap to approach them.
That don't use Airbnb or whatever, they use their own.
Yeah, there are a few outliers and.
But we have a way to track them now, right?
If, with, if.
With effort.
Yes, with effort, yes. There, the trolling, we call it a trolling tool. Uh, it's, it's Granicus previously host compliance? And they have methods that go out and look at, the number changes, but it's about seventy sites? That are used to book the sh- short-term rentals.
This is what I wish they knew. I'm surprised it's seventy, but.
They do, they do it all. Uh, and they come up and tell us which homes from our neighborhood are listing on what. Um, and so it's just a choice of, at some point, we're, we're still in, we don't know what Granicus is gonna charge us long-term. This year, they're giving us a pretty good discount because of some stuff, but, but long-term? The ten thousand dollars it costs for this tool, there probably aren't enough outliers to keep justifying it. That's a decision, we'll make it budget time, that contract comes up on September twelfth. I can't remember now, did they change it to thirty day cancellation they did give us? Anyway, so this time next year, we will have to decide if we're gonna continue using Granicus for those few outliers.
And we.
But this takes care of the majority of the.
It does, it does.
Do we have, uh, current portfolios, whatever, built against problem STRs? That we would be losing by giving this data to the, uh, rental agencies versus us keeping it in-house? And possibly already being close to pulling permits for problem short-term rentals?
We're working on that portfolio, Brandon.
But does our portfolio, those guys stop by second, this is what I'm saying, so those guys.
For that, for that violation.
But they're all gonna get do-overs, basically, clean slate.
Uh, no, no, we're still looking at going backwards. We are still, we are still investigating more options on going backwards.
This is just collecting, uh, the, it's, Galveston has a track record that it just will improve. The amount of money that, that the city.
Right, I'm just, I'm actually less concerned about the money the city makes for hot taxes than enforcing ordinances against, uh, problem STRs. And what I'm just saying is, if we've already got some STRs that are bothering the neighborhood on the fence? We do this and they're, they're consistently not paying this, would be my guess, and they probably don't think they need to. We're probably through four more months of them not doing that, from being able to pull permits. And the second we enact this, all that stops and we think they're paying because it's coming in lump sum? But they basically have been bad forever and we're giving them a life.
But we still can audit them.
But we can still, but we can still go backwards. And that was my concern too, right? Is we're, like I said, we are losing one potential lever? Uh, in our, in our ordinance.
But you also have another ninety days where you could be looking to act against those problems.
That's right. And we've got backwards, right? And we've still got backwards to go, so, um.
Okay.
Anyway. Uh, okay, so what I'm hearing is staff to bring forward ordinances for, for review and approval by team? To do both of these.
Yes.
Okay, but we're not vote, I mean, we'll vote on it next time and you'll have a chance to review it with the agenda packet? With all the language, et cetera. Okay. On to the next item. Discussion and consideration of an ordinance prohibiting wake on a flooded street. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion to discuss.
Do I have a sound?
Second.
Okay.
If there's any negative to this ordinance, I don't see it.
Well, I, I thought the ad about, I, I mean, I, a lot of homes had water coming in from the backside too. It wasn't just on the streets.
We already have a no wake. It's the canal though, don't we?
Yes, we did.
And the canals.
Okay, well, you just think that common decency would have people know to slow down? When you see, you know, this two-stomps tsunami coming over into a, a home.
Or when the bulkheads are all underwater, boats should be cognizant of that as well.
I saw very little boat traffic during the floods, but.
With the speeding.
It's dangerous, dangerous to compete with the.
It would've gone faster than if there hadn't been water.
So I, so I, I brought this forward because we obviously just went through this, so it's fresh on every, everyone's mind. We did receive lots of complaints about, um, traffic, you know, vehicles creating weight. Um, and so I will put it on here for discussion. As Chief Kirby likes to say, this is a tool for us, but, um, realistically enforcement will be difficult. Cause we're not gonna be patrolling those back streets actively. Now, if someone sent us a video and showed a vehicle and us roostering down the street? It is actionable, but that person who sent that video becomes the complaintant. It's not, we give you the, the police a video and they take care of it. They didn't witness it, it's not their video. Um, so, um, if I sent a video showing something that is actionable? They're gonna ask me or am I willing to put my name out there as the complaintant?
And come to court if it.
I'd be asked to, after what I've witnessed.
Yeah.
But this is still a good tool in the instances that it does apply anywhere.
But, you know, for, even if it's not witnessed, when we get, we, or it's witnessed, but we, we don't have proof of it? We can still go to, you know, track that vehicle down and say.
Reckless driving or something.
Something, there's, I think there's at least a reason to approach them and, and try to, try to talk to them and, and, uh? Help improve the situation later, even if it, even if it's not ticketed. But this does give us something.
And we've got new tasers.
And if someone were to call, at least.
It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's a no-brainer, we have to have it. Uh, cause when we go, I remember the mayor flagged me out about a vehicle that was all over Facebook. I found it, it was definitely a renter. And I went and had a little conversation, I was very polite because he has a little son, was admiring the police officer. I said, you do it, and then we're gonna have problems. The truth is, we don't have a tool in our toolbox to go appro- this guy could've told me, hey, get lost? And I could've had, had to get lost, I had no reason to, but he was actually cooperative, apologized. We didn't see him on Facebook, it's a no-brainer. We need to have it, it's a tool for us to use, to have a probable cause, to make a stop. You know, you sent us a video, we see him going down three double oh five, gives us a reason to go stop him? Because we do have something, an ordinance in place that says, hey, you were back here on Jamaica Cove speeding, causing wait, whatever it is? Man, don't do it again, by the way, we see your driver's license, check him, oh, you got warrants. Things like that, okay?
And could people call, someone's coming down Bob Smith, y'all could wait at the bar.
Absolutely, and I mean, the guys, they were sitting here, they were honking the horn, they were hitting the siren. I was sitting there with a lot of, all that Jeep was coming, hey, man, slow down, you know? We can do that, but with an ordinance in place, it gives us more tool to be able to do what we need to do? As opposed to Paul Yoder and Aaron, doesn't live here and says, you stopped at what? Wh- what law?
What's wait means?
Yeah, I don't have a, and then of course, Kendall, I'm glad I did with some awesome signs that we could put up, we're still talking about that. Maybe some blinking lights that come on during wait time, flip the, there's so many things we're throwing out there, but we've learned so much from this last deal. But it's a no-brainer, like you said, we need to have an ordinance, if we found one, Taz and I found one that, uh, Texas City PD has. I think we can adopt that, change it up a little bit, Jamaica Beach all over it, put it in place.
We just have to figure out signs.
Yeah, and the signs will come with it next.
I like the signs.
They don't even realize how bad they're ruining their vehicles. I mean, it's ridiculous, saltwater.
And I'm not trying to pick on them, but the people that we did stop in contact did not live here. To them, they saw it as just a regular road and whatever town they live in, it's just water on the road and they were just driving. They didn't realize what they were doing. We here know what they're doing. They didn't understand that, so gotta have this tool, gotta have some signs, I think we learned a lot from this last deal.
And for whatever reason, it wasn't just two or three knuckleheads, I mean, it was like dozens and dozens of people just.
Just driving.
Yeah.
And they don't realize that they're causing wait, they're just saying it's.
At least a foot higher or more wave that was rolling across the, hinting into properties, I mean, into garage doors, it was crazy.
Their citation would be.
Okay, so I'm, I'm hearing, let's bring the ordinance over. All right. Okay, next on the agenda is, um, my report and, and I don't have much to, to say this time. To reiterate what everyone else said, we had a great strategy meeting on Saturday. Uh, it is gonna take some follow-up meetings with council, but, um, it was, it was fabulous.
And it was public.
Working together, it was public and it was very.
Sorry, I shouldn't interrupt.
Oh, that's okay. Anyway, um, but it, uh, the mission statement was, I think y'all are gonna be thrilled with what, what council brainstormed and came up with? And we'll be slowly putting that plan out as the next layers of detail are worked. It's also perfect that it coincides with budget cycles, so it's giving council a great idea of where we need to focus our energy and our money. Uh, and also hurricane preparedness, I'll just reiterate again, when we call for evacuation, get out. Get out, get out, get out, get out. And as I stated at the hurricane preparedness meeting, be prepared? That we're gonna call for evacuation a little earlier than we might have in the past? Because every road leaving this island is under construction. So, um, that's just the way it is. All right, that's all I have on my mayor's report. And do I have a motion to, um? Help me.
To recess into executive session.
To recess, that's the word, to recess into executive session.
Oh, motion recess to executive session.
Thanks.
Okay, all in favor of recessing to executive session? All right.